So as they pass us orders, I want to start this press conference by saying that the purpose of this press conference is to make an announcement that we have changed our orders. I'm just about to sign them, and the mayor is going to explain the details of those orders. But the nature of it is the mass gatherings. It's the opportunity to limit those amount of people that gather. And you know that we did this earlier for 500, and then we had a change, an amendment, which is 250. And now we come before you, and I'll defer to the mayor, to talk about the Second Amendment. And at this time, I'm going to exercise my ability to sign while he describes with specificity why we are changing and what we are changing. Mayor?
Well, thank you very much, Judge. And we're all in the boat, and we're all rowing the same direction. I think that's really important for the public. What we do have here is a, this will be the Second Amendment to our emergency order, and it reflects what the ordinance that the city council adopted yesterday. And so we are, I am going to make some changes to that. What used to be the definition of a mass gathering, the number was 250. We're dropping that down to 50 because the push is that the less exposure you have, obviously, the better our chances of controlling the spread of the coronavirus. And so the 50 is, you know, just for people gathering in enclosed spaces, in single spaces. If you've got, for instance, a church or restaurant or anything that, you know, if you've got a room, the sanctuary will hold 50 people, and the fellowship hall will hold 50 people, that's okay. Just don't put the two together. You just want to keep the grounds smaller than 50 to reduce the number of exposures and opportunities to get the virus. And then there are some exceptions to that because it, again, because of the size, and they're, um, public and private schools. I think the Texas Education Agency controls the schools, and they'll be making their own decisions on that. Spaces where there's 50 more people in a transit area, in other words, a person waiting for a bus or an airplane or something, that would affect office space, hotels, restaurants, shopping centers, and grocery stores. You have to still be able to get to the grocery store, and, you know, there could very well be, for instance, in an HEB or a Walmart, more than 50 people in there, but they're going to be spread out all over the store. So you're not going to be shoulder to shoulder to them. So they've got the exceptions to that. And so that's the issue that we've got. And we highly recommend, under any other normal circumstances, particularly people of vulnerable exposure, high-risk folks, that you try to address groups to 10. That's a high recommendation. We're really not making part of the, as part of the requirement because if we went to 10, Judge, the Canales family and the McComb family couldn't have Sunday lunch together because we'd exceed the 10 number. But we do want, the emphasis of this is the effort to keep everybody healthy, and for those that may have the ability to spread the virus, we want to limit their exposure to groups. But I think working together, I think you're already seeing on the curves that I've seen on an international basis, this distancing is working, and you're beginning to see the curve come down. And we just want to stay ahead of the curve because right now, as of this morning, we had a joint meeting, kind of emergency management folks, the judge was on the phone from the courthouse, and her folks were here at the courthouse. We met at eight. She had the meeting, so she couldn't be at that meeting, but we were there. And the hospital district reported that as of this morning, we have still had no confirmed cases based on the testing that's being done by the city county health department. So that's good news. Our goal is to remain at zero, and that's the reason for all this exercise. It's going to be uncomfortable in some cases, but if you've got a little extra time, one of the things I did, for instance, last night, I got my notice to fill out my census information. So I'm sitting there last night filling out my census information because I knew I didn't have to get up and go to a meeting any earlier than eight o'clock this morning. So there's some things you can do, but it's going to be, your lifestyle is going to change a little bit, but a little bit of inconvenience for the next four to six weeks versus being sick, I think, is really worth the price. And we're going to continue to work with that and work together because all our goal is public health and safety of the citizens of Corpus Christi and Nuasis County. Judge, and I think we've already signed this change, and our ordinance goes through April the 17th. There may be some differences on the dates, I think, like the judge said, but as those dates roll, they can be extended. But the ordinance that we adopted at the city yesterday was for 30 days up to April the 17th. And so between now and then, we'll have a couple of more council meetings depending on how the situation is, that that date could be extended again. But right now, that our date is April the 17th.
Still no cases in Nuasis County?
As of this morning, I think, you know, both sets of ears heard from the, not the hospital district, but the health district, that there are no confirmed cases in Nuasis County and Corpus Christi. And that includes, I think, the first day's worth of drive-through test or the test they simulated, I believe, on Monday. So that's good, and that's our prayer, and that's our goal.
No doubt. And I just want to say that all of this that we are doing is to be proactive. And I want, you've seen this on television, but you know what? Local news, that's the news you need to watch because local news is your news, for your family, for your backyard. And this is 15 days to slow the spread. And this is why we believe that the actions we're taking under a unified effort is so vital right now. The fact that we don't have any confirmed cases is exactly why we need to continue to drop those numbers. And just so you know, we're adjusting as we get new data. Data drives our decisions under a unified effort. However, I'm so thrilled to partner with the city of Corpus Christi, but there are many other jurisdictions that Nuasis County covers, and for that reason, I have signed a separate order, and it will affect, it's titled "Order Regarding Gatherings in Nuasis County Public Facilities." You see, there's a lot of wonderful places that Nuasis County manages. There are senior centers, community centers, our fairgrounds. And it pains me because I know, I know that when Thetisita is there, Bishop, she's eating with probably more than 50 people. So we're going to have to do things that are different. But I know that we can be innovative, and we're already working with our community centers to work different lunch schedules, to deliver meals, to do whatever it takes. As I said, from arts and crafts to books to food, we're going to make sure that the people in our rural parts of our county are taken care of because the places that they're used to going aren't going to be available to them. It's also with a heavy heart that I tell you, some of our most beloved shows, the Saks at gun shows, some of the really important, you know, events that people love, the country peddler and things at the big weddings and events at the fairgrounds, they may not be able to happen under this new rule, and I understand that. But what I do know is that our fairgrounds are ready, willing, and able, that's for you, Abel Arreto, to make sure that they can also serve as a way to service us. So if we have to create opportunities to serve food, what better facility than our fairgrounds to do that? You know, so I am absolutely convinced that if we're going to follow the CDC's guidelines and really make a difference, you know who's really going to hold the line? South Texas is. Because South Texas doesn't have a confirmed case from Corpus Christi all the way down to the valley. And so as a result, we can really slow the spread. It's us they're talking about. And I know there's a lot of concerns, and as we get new data, we'll ask you to come before us again. But I just want to say, none of these decisions are ones that we want to make, both the mayor and I. We're pretty as pro-business as you get. We're churchgoers. We're people that enjoy gathering in big numbers, but this is what's required. And I think all of us can make this sacrifice for our fellow man, and that's how I see it. And so I'm really proud to be able to stand with him because I know that these orders, when they come from a unified voice, it means something. So I want to thank everybody that is doing their part, whether it's remote work, whether it's staying home, whether it's hunkering down like we were told. All of us are playing a vital part. And if we make another announcement, it'll be because it's, once again, in the best interest of our community, but because the CDC, because data is driving policy. I also want you to know that while the 50 is the mass gathering rule, the real number is 10 for social gatherings. So let's observe that as well, particularly for our vulnerable population. That number 10 is meant for our vulnerable population. And who is that vulnerable population? There are elderly, and there are people living with chronic conditions. And here in South Texas, we understand that we have a population that are living with high, you know, levels of chronic conditions. So we need to take care of them. And I would like to say and applaud our corporate citizenry from HEB to Whataburger. You know, they're making adjustments. I want to encourage more of that. I've been joined by Texas Restaurant Association President Kathy Snappka. She and I are going to meet, I hope, after this meeting. She's and I have been trading texts and letters, and we want to keep small business up. But I've asked her, and she is willing, to do everything they can because they know that transition could be imminent, but we don't know when. But it could be imminent. And so they're already thinking of ingenious ways of making drive-through available and making, you know, opportunities for limited seating and limited dining capacity. This is what's required. So all I want to say is gracias, thank you. And we are available, the mayor and I, for questions. He has things that he does that are specific to the city, and we have things that are specific to the county, but we are together in this. Thank you.
In español?
Sí. Este ahora el alcalde Joe McComb y yo como el juez del condado de Nueces estamos unidos que queremos parar este virus. Y cómo lo vamos a hacer? Lo vamos a hacer cuando no podemos reunirnos en grupos grandes. Yo sé que esto es súper difícil. En mi familia solamente somos 25 cuando queremos comer cada domingo, pero este es algo tan importante. ¿Por qué? Porque la distancia nos ayuda con este virus. Cada vez que estamos con todos o con gripa tenemos la oportunidad a mantener este virus si no estamos tantos juntos. Entonces el orden que el alcalde acaba de firmar, y yo también, dice que no deberíamos assemblarnos en grupos más de 50. También queremos decir a todos nuestros ancianitos, abuelitos y abuelitas, por favor cuídense. No asembras en grupos más de diez. ¿Por qué? Porque ustedes son más vulnerables, ¿verdad? Este necesitas cuidarse más. También gente que tiene enfermedades crónicas también. Este se puede atacar el virus más en sus cuerpos. Entonces tenemos que cuidar a todos. Hay 15 días, dice el presidente, 15 días para evitar este virus que crece. Y todas las acciones que estamos haciendo ahora es para evitar este virus, ¿verdad? Entrando en nuestra comunidad y afectando la gente que más amamos, nuestros familiares. Entonces aquí estamos juntos unidos. También mi orden extiende al condado, a Nueces, a Robstown, a Banquete, a Wedulce, Petronilla, Bishop, y Drisco, hasta el Puerto Aransas. Todos están afectados con mi orden del condado de Nueces. También los edificios del condado de Nueces. Este se aplica a ellos también. Junto, juntos podemos, este, regresar a normal. Eso es mi oración, este es mi deseo. Pero yo sí voy a proteger esta ciudad, este condado, con todo que yo tengo. Y por eso para mí no es decisión difícil para nada. 50 así instante. Y voy a pensar de otras acciones en el futuro. Después que la data me viene a mí cada tarde del gobierno federal, del gobierno estatal, estoy revisándolo. Y después que yo reviso a todo, luego podemos, yo y Joe, comunicarnos y hacer un plan. Juntos hacemos los planes y las decisiones. Estoy muy agradecida, muy agradecida a este alcalde. Joe, did you get it? How about this part? Y otra cosa, no te olvides, uno, dos. Nuestro proceso, uno, dos, habla. Si tienes preguntas, si tienes, si piensas que tienes la enfermedad, este, y ellos, la autoridad de salud, te puede ayudar, okay? Con instrucciones. Pero el proceso es hablar primero. Ellos pueden dar las instrucciones, y aquí estamos para servirlos. Gracias.
There was a little confusion with the county clerk. At first she said that the windows were closed, but then we got into Plexiglas thing. What should we tell them?
Right. So I think what you should tell them, and just so you know, this wasn't a meeting to really, you know, discuss, right? We've made lots of plans, but boy, there are a lot of offices we run. So I think we've identified today an issue that matters. I know that she wants to keep the public safe and her employees safe, but I think she was willing to concede that if we got protection up, that we could get those marriage licenses and some of the other critical documents. And so here's what I know. I'm pretty good at barking orders, right, Edward? We're going to get some Plexiglas. We're going to work with Juan and Edward and his team because we have a lot of crew here. I don't know how quickly we can do this, but I pledge that, you know, by next week, we'll be able to have a window up. And I think that's really probably the best way to do both, right? And I really appreciate this. I want to share something with you, too, and that is, is that we are trying to make certain that you do get up-to-date information, and if you'll be patient with us, I referenced an order by the judges. I promise to check on that because I want you to really use the order as the definitive details because they affect jury panels and people coming for jury duty. And I'm going to be looking for that order shortly. And mayor, I yield to you.
Will that be on the website?
Yes, it'll also be on Nuasis County website. You know what the nice thing we've been doing? We've been sharing information. So even though it's not necessarily city-needed, I mean, in other words, city-driven, it still affects citizens in Corpus Christi. So if you could post all the jury information, I think that would be great. I know you will.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, but I'll double-check, but I think if you, anything related to the coronavirus on the city website is probably linked in some way or another to the county. So I mean, any information, I think if you go to the city website or the county website, somewhere within that website, you're going to get the information.
And as far as the runoffs go, so I know that the government has postponed some elections, like we were talking about, the one that was happening in Corrayan, it's supposed to be in May. Could we get a clarification on the runoffs and what happens there?
She is standing right here. Come on up, Cara. She said, what I heard her say was May 2nd only. She's still waiting for guidance, but so far, we're on. Come on up.
We're going to go. Come on up.
You're just talking about the runoffs.
Right, just the runoff. So what was set up by the governor, that is for the May uniform election date. That is separate from the runoffs. We're still waiting on word from the runoffs, and that's all that we are concerned about at this moment. I want to address the confusion earlier. We have our plan. As long as the county will put up Plexiglas to support my, to protect my staff and the public, we will keep that window open for marriage licenses. So we've been guaranteed by the county they will do that, but it's really going to now be up to Public Works to get that glass up. Otherwise, we will be doing everything by mail because our first and foremost, what we want to do is keep our staff safe and keep the public safe. So just want to clear that up.
Starting tomorrow, the windows, besides marriage licenses for everything else, is that's not going to be closed?
If we get Plexiglas up across, if they are able to do that and quickly do that for the filings, we will keep that open. Yes. As long as, I think they're going to come and measure, and we can get that up. Collections know there's not a place to do that, so collections will still be closed. And also, our records room, that's closed. There's no way to, y'all have seen it, there's no way to put Plexiglas up because what we do is help the public with the public computers, and there's zero social distancing there. So again, but again, all of our records are online for free. So just go to our website, and then any records that you would come in to get in our records room, you can get those and print them for free.
You know, daily, I'm getting great ideas generated by our staff. You know, that's what's happening, is that, I mean, we are really ramping up technology to be our friend here. And so as I get more opportunities to, whether it's pay online, or see records online, or be able to teleconference or communicate, we're going to provide that. I mean, that is absolutely the important aspect of being, you know, an activist and being proactive. And I'll tell you that the judges in particular are getting a lot of great ideas from OCA, which is the Office of Court Administration. And so, you know, they have even a Facebook Live going on, I think, in Dallas where they're able to allow access to the public to any court proceeding. So actively, we're pursuing them, and we're enacting them when we think it's in the best interest of the public, and it always is. Accessibility and transparency is always in the best interest of the public. If there's nothing else? Yes, ma'am?
Do we currently have tests out that have a potential negative, or do we have any additional care out?
Well, actually, that's not true. Yes, there are some tests that I think are out because there are some tests that are out. You know, I'd rather defer that to the local health authority. I always, things change so fast. You know, I would really caution, but you know, I know that they update us every day. So feel free to call back the office of the mayor or myself, and we'll get you that information. I do want to say that we do have a local health authority, Dr. Rama Kadruini, and it was also his recommendation from a medical, from a, he's an infectious disease specialist, that we made the recommendations that we made. You know, it's not just our teams that are putting these plans together. We're doing so with really real experts in the room.
Do we have an idea as far as the child custody, medical insurance care, and some ways of passing that work out?
So Congressman Cloud was here with both of us yesterday. I don't know if you want to address that. He was, we addressed supplies with him yesterday. The strategic, the National Strategic Reserve of PPE equipment, personal equipment, was received this week in West Laco by our Region 11 CBRAC Director Hillary Watt. And she told me that we receive 25% of the state's supply. So I'm thrilled with this, okay? The problem is, is that we need a lot, we have a lot of people who need PPE besides our hospitals. Think about your primary caregivers. Think about your pediatricians, your nursing homes, your clinics. I spoke with the Men's and Women's Health Clinic just this morning, and they got their PPE equipment today, and they were very happy. So, you know, the issue is, is that there's a shortage everywhere, and we do have, we have received our stockpile, but we spoke with the congressman yesterday. I got on the phone with him and Krista Spahn, CEO, and I said, "I don't want to talk about this. I want you to hear from the guy on the front line," right? And he gave him a list of things that they would like to see. And I think if I heard correctly, it's the same as everybody. They want more masks, more gowns, and more eye protection. So, you know, we are going to keep looking and seeking for that which everyone is looking for, which is an abundance of supplies. But I do know that we received ours portion this week, and we're very happy about that.
Hi, quickly, one last thing. Yesterday, we had covered about child custody and how that's been affected.
Yes.
Due to the spring break. We've gotten viewers who've said law enforcement hasn't been enforcing that, that they're still having child custody issues because of the schedule of schooling. Can you just speak to that?
So I think I'm going to defer to Judge Nanette Hasset on this. They're actually meeting right now, and this was an issue. I can tell you that the Family Bar Association was in the room yesterday articulating this concern, and the judges and myself really are very concerned about it. What does it mean? You know, are you on spring break? Are you on extended break? You know, does that affect custody orders? You know, I also want to stress that there are many cases, as I said earlier, that have been postponed, right? But there is always going to be, always, an opportunity for people who are victims of crimes to be able to come and seek their day of justice. And for those orders that need, those special people that are, you know, the protective orders, I'm very sensitive to these protective orders and for the opportunity, you know, for child custody cases and our CPS cases. But you wouldn't believe how these judges have stepped up. I mean, literally Judge McCoy, whose court is so unique over there, every judge said, "I have the duty, I have the authority under the law to help in CPS cases. I'll come." And then the next judge said, "And I'll do it." And the next one said, "And I'll do it." And before I knew it, I'm sitting there, and I'm sitting on the fifth floor inside a courtroom, and I have chills because this is what's happening. So are there going to be issues with custody and protective orders and issues? Yes. But let me just tell you, our sheriff is going to be happy to take anybody in his jail that violates the law, and that's just the way it's going to work. We will have law and order, but we're going to make sure that we can do, you know, handle the things that we call essential in one way and non-essential in another way. In fact, yesterday, I was thinking to myself, God, I'm so glad I'm a lawyer, you know, because I was really in a position to understand as a county judge what the heck was going on and the complexities of what the judges are having to deal with. So having said that, Judge Nanette Hasset, Judge Missy Maderi have provided the leadership from both an administrative level and a presiding judge level. And if you wouldn't mind, if you'd see them, they're going to give you that nuance with regards to that family law issue that you've asked.
Is the rest of this testing, is that still on target for, is it still on target for tomorrow?
Thursday, I think, Friday for sure. I think, I don't know what time. You probably need to call Annette out at the health district to get exactly, but I know they were working feverishly to get it put together and get it up and tested and running. But they should, once they know that, definitely that you should get that, but that would be your point of contact on that because that's, they're the ones doing it, and they're in the process of making sure it's working, and we don't want to give any bad information out. So I'd direct to Annette Rodriguez.
I've heard that the test is on Sunday. Do you know roughly how many tests are done?
No, because I don't. You can be tested in a private way now. So for example, when I saw the statistics in Texas, you'll notice that half of them are coming from private labs and the other half are coming from health authority. So I'm going to defer that to Annette and ask her to address that. But I do want you to know that when we are up and running, the hours that were decided upon, unless there is a need that changes, was 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That was the scheduled time, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I would also suggest that we will get this information to the media, but there'll be a very special place for the media to be, to receive information from public information officers, from the respective organizations. And that's to give you all the information that you need and to help continue to, to help spread our good message that we have, this is a very good thing that we can test in our community. And the second thing I want to say about that is that I'm also sensitive to protecting the privacy of these individuals. And I think that's just really important. I think it's what you would want and what I would want. So I hope that, I know we can count on you to, we worked hard to find a location where we could respect privacy and also give you the information that you want so that you can share that with other people. And I think that you'll see that when you join us out there, that you'll see that it meets that very delicate balance.
About tourism and hotels, is the economy, local economy taking a hit or being impacted by all of this?
So mayor can probably speak to the city piece of the hotel occupancy tax. I'll speak to the CCREDC and maybe the port piece because that's the piece that I actually have been looking at. And they've been sending out, you know, very good informational updates. I particularly spoke with the CEO of the port. I heard him on radio yesterday, and, you know, he believes that it just geopolitics and the overall economy from a national standpoint have definitely affected oil prices, right? Not necessarily COVID-19 per se, but sort of the effect of COVID-19. And of course, you know, we're going to see a drop off in, you know, possibly down, you know, it takes a while to actually see the effects of things. But for example, three days ago, we loaded a Suezmax, you know, vessel, a million barrels inside the port of Corpus Christi. And that is, so it is, we are moving, we, you know, product. Our refineries are up and running. And again, we're just, we're going to be leaders, in my opinion, in the industrial sector of how to keep business running and keep us safe. And to evidence that, Danielle Hale, who actually was the Nuasis County Emergency Manager during Harvey... during Harvey, I'm sorry, not during Harvey, right before Harvey, is the current emergency manager for the port of Corpus Christi. So we have this amazing cross-collateralization working, so I think that, will it have an effect? Yes, but it has more to do with the way our economy works and the engines that are fueling it, but we are a diversified economy in port, right? So.
I don't think there's any question that, long-term, if it goes long-term, there will be a reduction in obviously hotel motel tax and people coming. On the other hand, with the cancellation of different events, that also has an impact on it, but, you know, right now, we've, we're trying to keep that zero number, we've got a lot to offer in Corpus Christi, but I think people are just kind of going to take a wait and see attitude, so I don't think there's any question that when the numbers start rolling in, you'll see some reduction, I just hope they're not significant in terms of substantial loss, but just being honest, I think everybody, I mean, any business, I think, whether in the convention visitor bureau, or just your hotel motel, or restaurants, with the situation we're in now, everybody's going to be feeling the sting for a while.
Thank you guys, thanks for, and I love this, this particular graphics, if anybody wants to, I'll leave them right here, but people really wonder what happened that everything turned. This is what happened. They gave us a chance, they said, "This is a way to change that curve." And I don't know about you, but when things are going bad for me, I want a plan, and this is the plan, and that's what you saw here today, but the directive comes from the best levels of government, and that's the scientific community from the CDC. So I personally am grateful for government giving us direction, and now it's my job to give citizens direction, and the Western County, and all of Nuones County the same plan, and with the same confidence that the CDC has given to me. So, thanks again, and we're going to resume a couple of items of regular business.